Diane has been running for only three months. And she's already terrorized Chris Christie. And is in the process with her colleagues, who you see here, terrorizing this bunch of cowards in the US Congress, who if allowed to continue, will destroy the nation. So it was a year ago that Keisha Rogers in Houston won a Democratic congressional primary on the base of two initiatives: to save NASA, that is, to restore the manned space program that Obama was attacking, and to impeach Obama. And that initiative has now developed as an emerging leadership, a policy leadership for the Congress and for the nation. And Diane represents that at its best. Diane?
I met a traveler from an antique land who said, "Two vast and trunkless legs of stone stand in the desert. Near them, on the sand, half-sunk, a shattered visage lies, whose frown and wrinkled lip and sneer of cold command tell that its sculptor well those passions read, which yet survive, stamped on these lifeless things: the hand that mocked them, and the heart that fed." And on the pedestal, these words appear: "My name is Ozymandias, King of Kings. Look on my works, ye mighty, and despair." Nothing beside remains. Round the decay of that colossal wreck, boundless and bare, the lone and level sands stretch far away. Unless we remove President Obama from office, then the fate of the people who, whatever Ozymandias' great works were, which are not known, that will be the fate of the human race, potentially. And people shouldn't doubt this. People have heard of Pompeii. People have heard of Manoa. People have heard of Atlantis. And there may be many other civilizations which we haven't even heard of, which were wiped out by the forces of nature that we're discussing here. What we're facing right now is potentially an existential crisis, perhaps the worst of it, is that because of the cultural changes after the death of President Kennedy, we don't even know what the crisis is that we face because we've so taken down our capabilities. Kennedy's vision was that by now, we would have had, we probably would have had a man on Mars. Imagine if we had seismometers on Mars, and we would know the parallel developments on Mars as to what's going on on Earth. We don't have that. Instead, we have a president who is acting in the tradition of the Olympian god Zeus, who threw his firebolts around whenever anyone didn't do what he said, and who took Prometheus, who had the gumption to steal the secret of fire and bring it to man. And he chained Prometheus to a rock. And Prometheus had his liver pecked out by day, and it regenerated by night, so he was able to be tortured for an extremely long time. So you have a pattern now with the Obama's absolutely hideous disregard. And you can think about it, everybody knows it. Think about the case of Haiti, which was referenced by Summers. Now, it turns out that we might actually have been able to predict the earthquake that struck Haiti, but presuming that we didn't really know the significance of the data that the satellites were feeding us at that time, the earthquake was a surprise. The rainy season in Haiti is not a surprise. The rainy season in Haiti happens every year. And members of the Army Corps of Engineers met with Obama and said, "We are going to have 1.2 million refugees sitting in a flood plain, where you have feces and corpses, and it's going to be underwater, and you're going to have every kind of imaginable disease, and these people have to be moved." And Obama said, "No." And people may have heard, I don't know if it's changed in the last few weeks, but not one dime of the money allocated for Haiti by the US government. I'm not talking about private relief agencies or other, but the US government had sent zero. Okay? The other is the case of British Petroleum, which people may remember. And there's a letter now being circulated by the Coast Guard, saying that they were not given access to the kind of intelligence or photographs or anything you would need to deal with the crisis. And in fact, here's a private corporation, British Petroleum, which is under probation in the United States because of various other crimes. They'd had a refinery which blew up and killed, I think, 35 people, and they were convicted of 479 felony safety violations. So it's not a company with a good record. But the policy of President Obama was hands-off. "We're not going to mobilize. We're going to let the private company take care of things." The private company, which has a criminal track record. So Obama has a criminal track record. Now, the other thing I wanted to reference is that the coverage of this earthquake in Japan, and as Summers said, "Here you have a quake." It's the largest quake presumably in 1,000 years. And there's 11,400 people dead, confirmed to this moment, and another 16,000 people missing. And what's the press coverage? Nuclear meltdown! The nuclear power plants, the nuclear power plants. No one in Japan died of nuclear radiation. In fact, if anything, what happened in Japan is an absolute affirmation of the safety and efficiency of nuclear power. You had 10 plants that were affected. Four of them were completely unscathed. They were 10 years newer than the six that were somewhat more affected. But no one died of radiation. So instead of saying, "We should have a crash program," we should develop the science that's needed to actually solve these problems. What's the news media's response? Attack science. Attack nuclear power. And people have seen the headlines, I find them amusing, the Bergen Record, you know? They say, "Traces of plutonium found." Well, guess what? There's traces of plutonium right here, the same amount in New Jersey, in Washington, as they're finding in Japan. It doesn't have, it's irrelevant. It doesn't, in fact, if there were no radiation, we'd all be dead. So what I've asked Jason, as you have gathered to go through, is the details of the questions of these satellites, what they're able to detect, and what the potential is. I just wanted to share with you, in case you think we're exaggerating about Obama's incredibly anti-American hatred of scientific discovery. About a year ago, he was in someone's backyard in Fairfax, Virginia, and he was talking about one of his favorite subjects, a subject that he shares with Chris Christie, which is green energy. And he says, and this is a direct quote, okay? Now, one point, the other point I want to make, though, when you were mentioning how renovation will oftentimes actually generate more jobs than new construction, "A related idea is what we can do to make our existing buildings and housing stock more energy-efficient." Because it turns out, we could probably cut about a third of our total energy use just on efficiency. We wouldn't need new technologies. We wouldn't need to invent some fancy new fusion or anything. Okay, that's Obama on that. And then, on his decision on why we don't need to revisit the moon, and I kid you not, the next two sentences after he says, "Why we don't need to go back to the moon," he says, "We're going to have a man on Mars by 2030." Now, I mean, give me a break. And he also had said that we could land on asteroids, like we're going to launch a spaceship from an asteroid. Anyway, he says, quote, "I'm not going back, I'm not going to the moon." I just have to say pretty bluntly, we've been there before. So what you have from Obama and his so-called science advisor, John Holdren, who's written entire books with people like Paul Ehrlich on how the world can really only comfortably sustain between 1 and 2 billion people, so you already may have an idea that they might actually want to encourage earthquakes and volcanoes. So there, that's where this comes from, that they're taking down every bit of advance notice we possibly could have. And one thing that's just come out, which I think is extremely significant, and there will be interviews with the scientist on our website, his name is Professor Piero Francesco Biaggi. And he's an Italian earthquake expert, and the science is funded so little that he had to take out a loan. He took a personal loan to do the research on satellites. And he says, this is a quote from him, he said, "There is great progress in the research of quake indicators. We have good parameters and various phenomena that point to coming quakes. But all of that is documented only in scientific studies. There is not any state organization anywhere which would use these options for the forecasts of quakes in a consequent way. This is not the job of universities, but rather of state agencies. So far, only data are collected. But it would be possible. We are already able to make forecasts." Okay, the potential already exists. And what he said to one of our people who called him is that two of his Japanese colleagues had indications on March 1st that Japan was very, very likely to be hit by a major earthquake. And their warnings were unheeded, and nothing was done. So his point being that the scientists alone cannot address this. You have to have a government policy. A scientist who's taken out a personal loan on his house or whatever to be able to do the research is not going to have the authority to move an entire nation, to deploy the Army Corps of Engineers, or to do something to address this. But he's saying that his colleagues had recognized 10 days ahead of time that the quake was going to hit Japan, and had their warnings been heeded, not one life would have had to be Now, on this question of nuclear energy, there's a film on our website, and I don't know how many people have seen it, it's called "The Science of Glass Steagall." A number of people may have seen this. But it's extremely significant because it's not about money. Some people mistakenly think that Glass Steagall is a banking policy, or it's a policy that has something to do with money, or they think that money has something to do with the Constitution of the United States. And what Hamilton discovered and developed as a scientific principle is the principle of credit, which is not money. It's the idea of the future. And it's the idea that a government can decide 50 or 100 years from now, what would be in the interest of posterity and in the interest of the general welfare. And the government can issue credit against the infrastructure of the future. And in a technical term, you would say it's a form of debt, but it's a debt that retires itself because it has a specific objective for the growth of the population. And what this film goes through is the development of our biosphere, starting a couple billion years ago, which is before most of us were here. And with these little, well, you had iron kind of freely around in the water and so forth, and you had these little teensy one-celled bacteria, that the first breakthrough is photosynthesis, which is a very exciting thing, that the sunlight, the energy of the sun can hit these bacteria, and there's a chemical reaction, and the bacteria release oxygen. And what happened is these, the oxygen would start to rise to the surface and would bind with the iron, and the iron would become some kind of ferrous oxide and sink to the bottom, which was very fortunate, because the first round of little bacteria could not survive in oxygen-rich water. So they really needed the iron to take the oxygen out of the water and sink to the bottom so they could live. And what happened is when the iron got depleted, you had an oxygen crisis. You had too much oxygen in the water, and all the little bacteria died off. And if you know about some of the iron, bog iron, iron under the surface, there's these layers, because it's the iron layer, and then it's the layer of the little dead bodies of the bacteria, and then another layer of iron. Well, what happened somewhere along the line is that a new kind of bacteria, cyanobacteria, developed which could actually live with oxygen. So in this case, this bacteria kept taking in sunlight, taking in sunlight, generating photosynthesis, generating oxygen, and it didn't die off. And the oxygen filled the oceans to a point of total saturation and burst into the surface. And the oxygen kept building up, and it ended up hitting the ultraviolet rays, the radiation of the sun, and it generated an ozone layer. And as a result of the ozone layer, the land became more protected, and more advanced forms of life were able to develop on the land. Now, you may say, "What on earth does this have to do with credit?" Well, what this has to do with is everything, because this is actually contrary to the stupid second law of thermodynamics, which people are taught, the law of entropy, that if you have heat transfer from one body to another, there's always some heat that you lose, they call it work, but what's happening is the universe is winding down. Well, actually, what you see from this is that the universe is not winding down, that from one development to the next, you have higher and higher order forms of life. And you have forms of life that consume more and more energy and give off more and more. And that's the natural negentropic, non-entropic development of the universe. Now, this is very, very relevant when you think about human beings, because the environmentalist lobby would have you believe that human beings are some aberration, were some cancerous tumor on the planet, and there should be less of us, when actually, we are, in a sense, the most extremely advanced form of life on the planet. And what we can do is continue the process, not by sprouting extra limbs or, you know, other things you might imagine, but by making scientific discoveries and discovering ways, again, this question of energy flux density, of getting more and more energy in a smaller and smaller area. So you take something like burning wood. If you were going to live on burning wood, I don't know how many acres it would take to get a family through a Maine winter. It would be a lot of wood. Burning coal was much more efficient. Petroleum was even more efficient. But you take uranium, nuclear power, 2 grams of uranium, you can get as much energy as 1,200 gallons of petroleum. So what you're talking about is condensing into a very, very small area, massive amounts of energy. And that is a natural development of the biosphere. And conversely, if you reverse this, if you say, "Well, let's not have all that burning petroleum and nuclear, nuclear, we're not going to have nuclear. We're going to go back, we're going to have solar panels, and we're going to have windmills." Well, what does that mean? That means that the energy flux density is you have to have massive, massive areas of land covered with these things. I was looking at it, and they have different figures, but to get the same wattage now as you, as we use now in solar panels, you'd need something like, there are different figures, but 30,000 square miles of solar panels, which is like three New England states would just have to be covered with solar panels. Plus, you couldn't get the density of energy in any one place if you want to do something really advanced, like steel or producing even aluminum. That's the funny thing about solar panels and windmills, is you can't actually produce the solar panels and windmills in an economy that's powered by these things. So now, what you have, and I want to just show you this, and then I'll tell you a little bit about Christie's plan. But I had made a point when I had, when Governor Chris Christie didn't know who I was and was unfortunate enough to call on me at his Paramus Town Hall meeting, I told him that we don't need windmills, we need nuclear power. And I didn't even know what his whole program was. I just knew he had some crazy scheme to put a whole bunch of windmills off Atlantic City. So Christie got really, he really bristled, and he said, "Do you know that New Jersey gets 53% of its energy from nuclear power?" And I didn't know that at the time, but I said, "Okay, well, that's good. We should get more." And he was like, really, and now I know why, because it turns out, he has signed on to this thing called the Energy Master Plan, started by Corzine, and they literally intend to replace the nuclear power that we have over 53% nuclear in New Jersey. We're going to reduce it to 36%, and we're going to replace it with solar panels and windmills. I mean, he and Obama, they're like this. They are like this. Now, I have to say just a couple things. You're going to be reading in your local papers about this wonderful Energy Master Plan, because they're putting up 180,000 solar panels in New Jersey on telephone poles, and various neighborhoods have been complaining about this because they block the sunlight from their yards and so on. And just to give you a sense, they say 180,000 solar panels, and this is probably a lie, because solar and wind, they way, way, way overestimate what they provide, because it's not always windy, it's not always sunny, and you get a very, very low efficiency. But even assuming that you do get 40 megawatts of power from 180,000 solar panels, they say this would provide energy for 6,600 homes. Now, just to give you a sense, because I was looking into this, the amount of energy used by, for residential purposes, not including commercial and not including industry, residential energy use in the state is 1% of the energy consumption of the state. Okay? And 6,600 homes, I mean, that might be a town. So you think about what you're talking about, 180,000 solar panels for this, and if you go out and count how many telephone poles on your block, you can see that you probably would need two or three blocks of telephone poles to get enough solar energy to heat one house. So if you're going to have the energy, you can explain to your neighbors why they're not. I mean, it's just completely insane. The other thing about solar, because LaRouche was discussing the danger to firefighters of solar panels, so I dug around and I found a manual about firefighters and electricity, because there's a big danger if you're pouring water on things, you're going to get electrocuted. So they always have to turn off the voltage and so on. But the problem with solar panels is you can have many different areas where you're getting this voltage coming out. And the firefighters may not always be trained in finding exactly how to turn on and off the solar panels, and they've had fires where you have zillions of solar panels on a roof, and only a couple of the solar panels are part of the fire, and people can't figure out the, you know, the switchboard. And further, that if you break a solar panel, you could get electrocuted. So if people have solar panels on their roof, there is no way a firefighter is going to go on that roof, or break through the roof, or you can just forget it. So, I mean, they really are completely insane. It's a total step backwards, and you think, I mean, just think of it, promoting this, promoting solar panels and windmills at the very moment that we're taking down the satellites that are giving us advance notice of earthquakes and volcanoes. And they call this a scientific advance. So what I thought was worth reflecting on a little bit is what Bill raised, which is, what's the identity of the United States? And you think about the idea of people traveling over here from Europe, from other parts of the world, and the very idea that the Earth was round. I mean, this was a big discovery in Egypt of Eretatines in 232 B.C., was the question of whether the Earth was round or not, and that you could actually measure the circumference of the Earth. This was a major scientific breakthrough of the day. And the question of the founding fathers of our country, Ben Franklin, everyone knows, was a scientist. And I don't think it was happenstance or random that Ben Franklin happened to be doing all these experiments with electricity at the time that he was running wild conspiracies in France and organizing support for the American Revolution. And one thing that he did, which I really think is very, very relevant for what we're dealing with today, because to us, it seems pretty unimaginable to think of preventing an earthquake or preventing a volcano. But what Franklin did with the lightning rod was similar in his day. And prior to the lightning rod, people were absolutely terrified by lightning. I mean, it was the source of all kinds of superstition. If you were struck by lightning, you were a witch. And they had a problem explaining why lightning kept striking the churches with the steeples, you know? So all these crazy, crazy, superstitious theories were surrounded this enormous, I mean, he knew it was an enormous power, because you heard the thunder, and, I mean, this was a big deal. And Ben Franklin demonstrates that you can capture and direct this charge and ground it in such a way that the building doesn't burn down and you don't get struck. And the lightning rod seems like a very simple thing, but this, the breakthrough of the lightning rod completely changed the relationship between the population and the universe. Because instead of being ruled by terror and superstition, they could say, "Okay, we can gain mastery, we can learn scientific principles, we can learn to understand this." So it was extremely important, and it was a real defeat of the principle of Zeus, keeping the population backwards in an ignorance. Now, a friend of mine, Pam Lowry, who people know, her late husband wrote a very wonderful book on how the nation was won, the beginning, the seeds of the American Revolution. And she sent me a little note about Thomas Edison, because of course, he was working here in New Jersey, also on electricity. And the attacks on Edison by, from, you'll never guess, Brits, which are really something. Professor Sylvainus Thompson. And Edison was really excited about the light bulb and everything he was going to be doing, and he spoke about it all the time. So he didn't try to like keep it under the closet or not be enthusiastic, because he didn't want to be attacked. He was always publicly musing about the great potentials of use of electricity and incandescent bulbs. So this British professor, Sylvainus Thompson, in a public lecture says, "We have heard a great deal of late of Mr. Edison's discovery of a means of indefinitely dividing the light. I cannot tell you what his method may be, but this I can tell you, that any system depending on incandescence will fail." So that was his comment. And then, John Sprague, another so-called electrical researcher from England, says, quote, "Neither Mr. Edison nor anyone else can override the well-known laws of nature. And when he is made to say that the same wire which brings you light will also bring you power and heat, there is no difficulty in seeing that much more is promised than can possibly be performed. The talk about cooking food by heat derived from electricity is absurd." And then she notes that despite all of this, because people do get inspired by science, Edison's worldwide reputation was so great that the gas stocks in England and the United States plunged. And the British Parliament, who wanted to reassure the investors, appointed a parliamentary committee to investigate Edison's claims, and their report stated that Edison's wild dreams might, quote, "be good enough for our transatlantic friends, but they're unworthy of the attention of practical or scientific men." So it's not unusual for the people who are actually doing the work that generates the breakthroughs to have the most... breakthroughs to have the most challenging time getting their ideas across. And the people who are doing wacky things, like Newton's alchemy, or Al Gore's global warming, have just enormous amounts of funding and publicity, so they can promote their nonsense. But this is really the identity of the United States, and everybody, in other words, it was not a religion, it wasn't a race, it wasn't even a particular piece of land, but it was an idea of, of the actual development of mankind. So George Washington, who led the army and became the first president, was completely obsessed, he did surveying, he was obsessed with finding passes through the mountains to go west with the development of canals. That was his mission. Or you think about Alexander Hamilton, who I've spoken about so much. I mean, they're, here they are fighting a revolutionary war against the British, and they see the Great Falls in Patterson, they say, "Okay, this is a source of great power. We can have an industrial city here." Or Abraham Lincoln, who fought to build the Transcontinental Railroad, starting in the middle of the Civil War, which is a pretty wild idea. If you think, in the Civil War, we lost 600,000 men. And in the midst of that, he starts the Transcontinental Railroad, and it's finished in 1869. And for people who don't know, the, the locomotive on the Union Pacific side came from Patterson. It was a Rogers train. But, I mean, just amazing. And then I recently reread one of Lincoln's speeches that he gave to the Wisconsin State Fair of Agriculture. And, you know, he had every detail of which farms were producing how many bushels of wheat. And he went through this incredible thing about, you know, some farms right now are only producing 10 bushels of wheat. I've heard that some could produce 200. The average seems to be 50. Now, you could say that, why don't you just have five acres of land producing 10 bushels, you'll still get 50 bushels. But he said, "That's really inefficient, and if people have too much land to farm, the farms tend to die off. So what you want is for it to get the most efficiency, do the work, and get the greatest efficiency in a given area of land." And this was Abraham Lincoln, directly speaking to farmers. It sounds exactly like Lyndon LaRouche. And then later, you had Kennedy. And again, I just, I found, people know the speech, I'm sure, and many people here may have listened to it, when, when Kennedy gave the speech in '62 about the necessity of landing on the moon. There was one paragraph in that, which I don't think is that well-known, but really struck me in terms of thinking back to the level of technology we had at that time, and what Kennedy was actually proposing. And he says, "But if I were to say, my fellow citizens, that we shall send to the moon 240,000 miles away from the control station in Houston, a giant rocket more than 300 feet tall, the length of this football field, made of new metal alloys, some of which have not yet been invented, capable of standing heat and stresses several times more than have ever been experienced, fitted together with a precision better than the finest watch, carrying all the equipment needed for propulsion, guidance, control, communications, food, and survival, on an untried mission to an unknown celestial body, and then return it safely to Earth, re-entering the atmosphere at speeds of over 25,000 miles per hour, causing heat about half that the temperature of the sun, almost as hot as it is here today," he said, "and to do all this, and do it right, and do it out, do it first, before this decade is out, then we must be bold." Okay? So that's the, that is actually the attitude of Americans. That's the attitude of the United States, not, "Why should we go to the moon? We've been there before." And it's worth taking this seriously, the threat, which Jason, again, will make very, very clear in his presentation, why it is so likely that we are going to be hit with major, major earthquakes, maybe even nine and 10 on the Richter scale, and maybe in succession. And it would mean that while we may not have time to fortify our infrastructure as the Japanese had, and I don't know if people saw those YouTube videos of the Japanese skyscrapers, it's pretty amazing, because they prepared after a quake in '95, and they built these buildings with, like, two stories of shock absorbers. So you see them in a nine quake, and the buildings are kind of, and they, they stay. I mean, it was amazing. But that takes time. I'm not sure we have time to rebuild San Francisco, or Los Angeles, or Seattle. But if we had four weeks' notice, you could get the population out of there, and you could secure things so that you didn't have a total loss of, of millions of lives and devastation of the environment as a result of one of these quakes. And that would require a huge mobilization. And Obama has cut $900 million from the Army Corps of Engineers, and is taking down the satellites. And, and just to give you a sense, that some, some leaders are responding. The president of Mexico has announced that they are going to have 15 earthquake drills between now and September. So that Mexico City is actually preparing, they're having a whole series of practice evacuations and practice drills to make sure that the population is actually prepared, because they've been struck, they had a major quake there in '85, so they're on a fault line, and they want to be ready for it. So you compare that to what Obama is doing, which is not only taking down the satellites, but Summer told me on the West Coast, all of the new, the city councils and the local groups are having emergency hearing, meetings about earthquake preparedness. And of course, what they're discussing is pathetic. It's about having water, making sure you get cash out of the bank, because the ATM won't work. And, and when Summer and my other colleague, Dave Christie, say, "Well, what about the satellites? What about infrastructure?" They say, "Well, this isn't in our purview. We can't discuss it." And then inevitably, at the end of the meeting, the very best people in the meeting come rushing out after our people, because they say, "You're right. What you're saying is the only thing that makes any sense." So we're meeting some really incredible top scientists, I mean, very good people, who seek us out when they hear our sensible approach as opposed to this lunacy. But what the news media, even with these little emergency hearings going on all over the West Coast, the newspapers there are saying, "There will be no earthquake." And that is bizarre. I mean, it actually does make you think that the intent is to kill people. I mean, because why would you even say it? What's, what's the necessity of saying, "There will be no earthquake"? And since we don't have any satellites, what's the basis for knowing that anyway? So what, what I just wanted to say in closing is that this, this type of emergency is why the six of us are running, that it's become very, very clear that Obama has made himself an obstacle to the survival of the United States, and possibly civilization, and, and should be removed. That Glass Steagall, the separation of commercial from investment banks, so that we stop the bailouts, and LaRouche made the point, "Look, if we stop these stupid bailouts, we'd have $20 trillion right there to start building infrastructure. So we could start building the country to do what's required." So Glass Steagall now becomes a different matter of national security, of real urgency. And then finally, as people know, we, we've been talking about the construction of NOAAPA, the North American Water and Power Alliance, which is a major water and energy and transportation project, which would ultimately create about 7 million jobs. But it now also becomes very interesting, because it turns out that when you fill a reservoir with water, you often get tremors, you provoke tremors. And it may be the case that doing things like this is actually a way to help stabilize the Earth. In the case of these earthquakes, we just don't know. And that's the, the main point. We haven't done the work. We haven't done the research. We now have enough to know, this Italian professor said that they warned 10 days ahead of time about the quake in Japan. So we, we do have enough science to actually predict when an earthquake is coming and approximately where it's going to hit. We don't know that much about the Earth, the surface of the Earth, the depth of the Earth. One of our basement friends said that the models that people seem to be using are those gobstoppers, you know, those big, what are they, used to call them, jawbreakers, with all these layers, and they show you on a classroom, and this is what the planet looks like. Nobody knows that. We haven't done the research. So he said, "It'll go the way of the, the old model of the universe, where the solar system was on the back of a turtle." Right? So that's the idea, that we now, we should take this moment, this crisis, to launch a program of economic and scientific recovery that is 10 times more urgent than when Kennedy launched the moonshot. And, and that is what the six of us are proposing.